All right, can you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, October 8th. It is a little after 8 o'clock PM. I apologize for late start. We were in executive session, executive session where we were discussing non-union compensation. The first resolution on the agenda is considering an appeal of a tree removal permit denial at 49 Country Ridge Circle.
Whereas Matthew Gilman, the owner of 49 Country Ridge Circle, applied for a tree removal permit for four pine trees and 12 to 15 hemlock trees. And whereas the superintendent of public works, Michael Nowak, denied a tree removal permit for the removal of these trees. And whereas Matthew Gilman has appealed the denial in an email written on September 25th, 2024. And whereas, under the village code, the village board shall hear any appeal brought in accordance with the village code within 45 days of the submission of the appeal. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Rybrook hereby either grants or doesn't grant the tree removal appeal, conditioned on the revision of the repanting plan to include an assortment of, we just have to clarify, that's for 12 trees, subject to approval by Michael Nowak, as per village code.
Thank you, Chris. I guess, hold on. Well, I guess, no.
Yeah, well, either approve or not approve. So you have to probably wait and hear.
Right, I have to wait, yeah. All right, so I believe we have the homeowner here? If you want to come up, please. Introduce yourself, state your address, even though we already stated both of those things.
I'm Matt Gilman. My address is 49 Country Ridge Circle, Rybrook, New York.
What's the zip?
0573.
I didn't know that, thank you.
Just making sure I was clear.
Yeah. So you're looking to, so tell us a little bit about what you're looking to do.
Yeah, so basically, the house has, across the back of the property, has hemlock trees and pine trees. And the hemlock trees are, some of them aren't alive. They're very thin. They don't provide privacy. They look like they're on their way out. We had Mike come out, obviously, then we had an arborist come out. So we wanted to remove those. And then the pine trees, I'm not a tree expert, drop sap, drop pine cones on our house, our neighbor's house, and we want to remove them. We want to replant trees in their place, but right now, they don't look good. And a lot of them are dying. Our neighbor behind us, he's lived there for 20 years. When he bought his house, he said he took all the vines that were wrapped around all those trees. He said he's been feeding them for 17 years, and he would love for them to go, as well as the other neighbor next to him, which has the pine trees that, you know, on the property line as well. We're looking to replace the trees, not just take them out, but obviously, we have to go through the process.
Right. Understood. Uh, Michael?
You taking my spot?
Good evening, members of the board. Michael Nowak, Superintendent Public Works, 938 King Street.
Is this your other home?
No, I didn't mean to talk about that.
This is your other home?
As has been mentioned by Mr. Gilman, for clarity purposes, the permit was denied on the basis of clearcutting. Under the village code, there are regulations on the number of trees that could be removed on a property at any given time. And while there are a handful of regulated trees, the remaining two dozen or so trees, 18 trees, are under the regulated size, but would constitute clearcutting under our code. So that's why the permit was denied. Not arguing about the condition. I fully agree with the applicant. They are in a tough situation. They were planted as a hedgerow back in the day. They're overgrown. They're scraggly. Wooly edeljitz, top-heavy, just a number of issues, but under the code, it is clearcutting. Spoke with Mr. Gilman a little while ago before the meeting. There is a typo. It should be 12 trees total, not nine trees. He will revise that and get that back to me, but that's where we're at. He also has an application before the building department for a fence, right?
Yeah, the fence is approved, so we're going to put the fence.
So that's been approved, so, yep.
Right, so most likely, if the fence has been approved, so that may damage some root material also in the, all right. As a quick question, since you're more familiar with the code, does the, what's being proposed in the, sorry, what's it called? The tree, the plan, yeah, the tree planting plan? Do you think that meets what our code says for removal of trees and replanting?
It does meet the replanting requirement, okay? The replanting requirement is 12, and that's what the plan will be revised to reflect. Our code stipulates native hardwoods, maples are equal, or red buds are equal or native. Why Mr. Gilman has stated or equal is because he's trying to plant right now. He's trying to move along, so right now nursery stock is a little hit or miss. There might not be a red maple. It might be sugar maple. There might not be any maples. He may get whatever else. So he wants the flexibility to get something of similar size of a different species.
What'll the trees take when you knock these down? Do you pull them out from the roots, or how does it work?
So our code requires that the stumps be ground down. They're right up against the property line, just about, with the neighbors, so I would assume you're going to plant, you're going to install the fence right where the trees were, I would assume, and then plant in front of them. So there's going to be room in front to plant. So they're going to have to use a machine here to plant. There's no way they're going to plant this by hand. It's a lot of trees.
A lot of trees.
Yeah.
And is there a? Now's the time to plant?
Yeah.
Of course, the fall is the best.
Now's a good time.
Now's the best. It takes much better, so.
It's just a matter of what's in stock.
Do we have a size requirement of what they're planting?
Two, two and a half by code.
A caliper?
Yes, and that's noted on here. So he's got.
Yeah, no, I don't have it.
He's got two and a half inches on here. Should be two and a half on the red bud as well, two to two and a half.
I can't get.
Michael?
Yes.
If we were to make an exception to our code on clearcutting, how will we define the exception so that somebody can't come to us tomorrow and say, "We want to do it also"?
They would be denied the same way, and the board would have to hear the merits of the application. You know, there are times where it's warranted. There are times where it's not warranted.
That's what I'm looking for, is the definition of how you determine when it's warranted and when it's not.
No difference than a zoning application. It's on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, and I think that's why it's before the board, is because it needs a policy review, because it isn't clear. It isn't clear. It's not always going to be
by definition, yes or no, which case it could be in the code. It needs to have more of a dialogue and look at the situation.
Correct. So our code does have language in there that stipulates, it's me going off memory, so don't quote me on this, but it states something similar to any, to no more than 30% of trees on a property over six inches in diameter may be removed from a property. Or something similar to that is within our code, and that's what triggered.
The clearcut?
Yes.
Okay, that's how you define clearcut?
In the definition, there is.
Thirty percent, something, thirty percent, like, okay.
There's a percentage and a size removed from a property.
Not the amount of trees?
Not the amount of trees, it's a percentage.
Okay.
Percentage.
So how, what's the percent? Are we like, is he close? Just out of curiosity.
Almost 80%. So there's, I believe, two maples in the back, which are going to remain?
Yeah, there's two maple trees in the back, look good, they're going to stay, and there's two maples in the front. There's a big cherry blossom in the front. There's a lot of trees that were on the property that, they were all planted when the original homeowner bought the house, I think.
One of the questions was, when was the last time, this came in front of us, where we had a clearcutting issue? Do we had a?
I don't remember one.
No, I don't think it's an issue. We don't have that many.
Okay, good. Okay.
Twenty what?
I remember Rock Ridge had one. I mean.
2022, Greg said.
That's it.
Not that many.
It doesn't come up often. A lot of times, I'll try to work with the applicant behind the scenes to work something out amongst ourselves.
Yeah, yeah, okay. That's good.
But in this case, it's not much here today, and, you know, but I cannot approve it.
Lot of money. I never would've go there.
I would prefer to not. I prefer to not.
Yeah, yeah.
If I didn't feel like I had to, it just, you know, I could sit in the back.
And they agree. They're like with you. He's got a pool back there, I saw.
Yeah, he said his thing up, everything.
And his pool makes a mess. He'd be loving it, yeah.
It's going to go sun, because the sun comes.
Evergreen.
Yeah. Shade, yeah, he'll love it, I'm sure.
And there were images supplied in the packet that showed that they're top-heavy there.
Not looking so great.
The story growth is gone, so. And that's one of the issues when these kinds of trees are planted, like a hedgerow, or white pines are planted as a hedgerow, and they start to grow into each other like this.
Okay.
Other questions or comments from the board?
No.
All right, can I have, I'm assuming a motion to approve?
Motion.
So moved.
I think we have a second from Susan?
Second. Sorry. Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Sorry we started late.
Go Mets.
Resolution number two, considering approving the use of village streets for Belfair food truck event.
Whereas the Belfair HOA wishes to hold the food truck event on Saturday, October 19th, from 12 to 3 PM on the Village Green Circle. And whereas the Belfair HOA wishes to close Belfair Boulevard at both ends for the food truck event. And whereas the road closure of Belfair Boulevard requires approval of the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees. Now therefore be it resolved that the final, subject to final approval of the police department, the Belfair HOA is permitted to use Belfair Boulevard for the food truck event on Saturday, October 19th, from 12 to 3 on the Village Green Circle. And be it further resolved that the village streets shall be used in compliance with the terms and conditions established by the police department. And be it further resolved that the HOA must also obtain food truck permits from the administrator clerk's office for the food truck event.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Well, I am assuming, since the Belfair HOA is applying for this, that they've discussed it with the residents, who would be the only ones who would not be happy with it, but I think they enjoy this event. This is an annual event, and I certainly see no problem with this. Any questions or comments?
No.
Trustee Epstein, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number three, considering the authorization and funding for additional positions.
Now therefore be resolved that fiscal year 2024-2405 adopted budget is hereby modified to add funding for and authorize the appointment of two police officer positions and one assistant village administrator position. And be it further resolved that the following general fund budget transfer be hereby approved, and as a transfer of contingency of $32,000 from the contingency account to the administrator's assistant village administrator account.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
Motion.
Just a little background?
Sure. Yes, so we have some organizational changes and staff changes that are expected in the, for the village in the upcoming months, and we just need to prepare for some of those modifications to assist in that transition. So in order to do that, we need to provide some funding, and the county, when we ask for those positions, the county needs to see that there's funding in place, and the positions are authorized. So in order to meet that requirement, you need to have a resolution authorizing those positions and making sure that the funding is in place for it.
Questions or comments? I know that this is important to a successful transition.
Yep.
As, you know, and certainly, you know, we always are very supportive of our police force, and we are glad to continue to be so.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number four, considering an agreement between, I'm guessing, between the Village of Rybrook and Rostan Solutions for a benefit cost analysis for the Avon Circle and Portchester Middle School flood mitigation project.
Whereas Avon Circle and Portchester Middle School field area has been prone to flooding in previous storms and instances of large amounts of stormwater. And whereas Rybrook has been awarded a grant of up to $200,000 from the New York State Homes and Community Renewal Risk Program to complete a benefit cost analysis for this flood mitigation project to assist the village in applying for grants for the balance of funding needed for this flood mitigation project. And whereas Rybrook has received three proposals to complete the BCA, or the Benefit Cost Analysis, with different approaches to completing the task. And whereas Rybrook recommends accepting Rostan Solutions' proposal at a fee not to exceed $24,650, as it provides the best methodology and scope of work to complete the BCA at a reasonable cost. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves an agreement between the Village of Rybrook and Rostan Solutions of 350 Lincoln Road, Miami Beach, Florida, for a BCA analysis at a fee not to exceed $24,650, subject to modification by the village attorney. And be it further resolved that the mayor and administrator are authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Could I have a motion second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
Yes.
Have we ever used Rostan before?
No, but we received them from, they've done, we've never hired a consultant to do a BCA analysis. This is kind of a specialized area. So we asked for some engineering firms that have done this type of work and specialize in doing BCA analysis. So I'm going to take a step back, if you don't mind. We've applied for the funding for this grant, for this project and other projects. And where we typically have the hardest hurdle to get past is showing a benefit cost analysis that shows a one-to-one ratio, meaning that the amount of money you're spending is going to provide the savings on the other end.
Savings, yeah.
Cost, the cost. Will offset the cost by an equal amount.
Right.
And that's a high standard. That's everyone's most difficult thing to do, is to show that BCA analysis. So we've had this great project funded, largely funded, at one time it was funded, half the funding was already approved by the county. Now with escalation, it's not half anymore, but we still have like three and a half million dollars or so from the county for this project, towards this project. But we've been unsuccessful in getting grants almost across the board because of the BCA analysis falling short. And the reason is, it's hard to get all the information. They're all, they're not village costs. It's Avon costs. It's going to the school district, getting their costs. It's looking at different elevations. You can do that, and there's different ways to look at the BCA analysis to show ways that environmentally it provides a certain type of benefit. So that's what these people do. This firm will come in, they specialize in understanding how to kind of push, to make sure that everything is complete, to make sure the BCA analysis is the best chance to succeed. So this is a company that does this, does this often, and this is specialized in this area. We received, as Trustee Heiser has said in the past, the cost differences between proposals is always wide-ranging.
Yes, amazing, right?
You have some that will just complete the software program, and it's very low cost. You have some that want to do, you know, four times as many engineering, engineering costs and studies than what we're recommending. But the good news here is, we have, this is a reasonable firm with experience, and the cost is wholly paid by a grant.
Quick question. Is it, do they look at what the damages occurred in the past, and that's why they make the cost, or all these damages cost FEMA, or the?
That, one is the damage cost, but then the other part of it is looking at, and Michael could help me more here, but basically, the elevate, the floodplain elevations play into the, have the BCA analysis to show how much change from what's currently out there, how much it will change environmentally, and how much it can save on the final product will show a benefit that you could, you could attach a cost to, basically. I don't know, Michael, could you give any better description than that, or?
And will that cost savings be like all the way down river, even?
No, this is primarily to help the Avon property from the damage.
Right.
And it'll help the school district by giving them a usable field.
Right.
But, but in order, by giving them a usable field, what they're doing is allowing us to use beneath the field as flood storage. So that's the trade-off there.
That's a trade-off. Okay.
Am I the only one who finds it ironic that we're using a Florida firm to talk about flood?
Yeah. I actually was thinking where this is located.
Up to their elbows.
Probably why they have experience, right?
That's why they said they could get this done in two weeks.
They're going to be up here.
They got fired, didn't they?
What the BCA analysis takes into account is the environmental impacts of the area as well, so any degradation to natural habitat, wetlands, buffer, lawn area, usable spaces, such as the, such as the soccer field at the middle school. That constant flooding and need to repair, that's all monies that over time get adapted. Any of your wetland buffers, all the destruction to that area, there's a benefit to something like that. You could assign a benefit to a tree for the lifetime of that tree. And those numbers actually escalate very quick, okay? So if you take a 30-inch oak tree, you could assign a $50,000 benefit to that oak tree, let's say, for the environmental benefit over the lifetime of that tree. So you start adding 20, 30 oak trees. You start adding acreage of area that's been disturbed. You start adding.
Potential damage to buildings, to.
Building infrastructure, electrical systems, all the relocation services, temporary services. You start adding that up, and your numbers start escalating pretty quick. This is a big project, so the number is high, but through escalation over the years, unfortunately, that's where we're at. But once again, the repair services have escalated just as equal. So the goal is to get to 1.0 or higher on the BCA. And as mentioned, the long shot here, the legwork is getting all of the data from three or four entities to support this.
Okay.
We never did this before?
No, we've never done a BCA analysis outside of just normally, sometimes you can just collect enough data to meet the criteria, but
Never.
this is much more involved.
Okay.
Sometimes you can just show like, all right, the project's going to be 100,000, but here's, we can show 300,000 in damage, that kind of small, you know, of damage as has been incurred, but this is much different. That's simply just by grabbing like insurance, insurance information that's available through FEMA, through the flood insurance program. You know, if it's something like that, it's easy, but something like this, it's hard to meet that criteria, which makes it hard to get the money. And again, this works, this is like GIS work in there. There's the reverse engineer surface water elevations, whatever that is, Michael. And then applying it to a software program that they use for this purpose. Yeah, it's a, and again, good news, paid for through a grant that doesn't have a contribution.
Right, wonderful. We're all against flooding.
Thank you.
And I will say that the school is anxious to move forward on this project, because they've been waiting, you know, been patient for a number of years, so they've been, you know, they're willing to wait it out, given the timeframe, but they don't want this to be forever either.
Right, wonderful.
Any other questions?
No.
I mean, if this, hopefully this helps us get to the end goal.
And we're trying to get this, this done, so we can make this application timeframe, which will be awarded early next year.
Right, which is really what we're hoping for, is because we have other funding lined up. We want to really get to this end goal, to do what is a significant project that will have positive results downstream.
And it's a great, well, in Avon particularly, it'll solve the Avon problem, which is important.
Sounds like a win-win-win.
Yeah.
Which is, and again, it's really a great project. You look, take a step back.
It really is.
You're talking about a school district working with the village, where the town's also involved in it. Private company, private entities like Avon, you know, it's a nice intermunicipal, interpublic-private partnership, really, to see all this, make all this happen.
That's because they're all done.
Trying to do it without any, any real cost, time investment, but not a cost investment.
Yeah, right. Yeah. Okay.
Great. Questions, comments, anything else?
Yeah, we should question it out.
Thanks for explaining it so well.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolu, I forgot number. Resolution number five, designating polling locations and hours for the village election on March 18th, 2025.
Be it resolved that the voting machines owned by the County of Westchester shall be used for the next village election to be held on Tuesday, March 18th, 2025. And be it further resolved that said voting machines are not available. The County Board of Elections has the authority to change the use of paper ballots. And be it further resolved that the polls in each of the nine election districts in the Village of Rybrook shall be opened at 6:00 AM in the morning and remain open until 9:00 PM in the evening of said day. And be it further resolved that the polling places be hereby designated for the respective polling districts as follows. I'll just read quickly. District 20, Portchester Middle School. 21, Portchester Middle School. 22, Rybrook Firehouse. 23, Crawford Mansion. 26, Portchester Senior High School. 27, Crawford Park Mansion. 29, Crawford Park Mansion. 30, Rybrook Firehouse. And 31, Belfair Meeting House.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
So moved.
Second?
I think this is pretty straightforward, something we have to do before any election. Any questions or comments?
No.
When did they move them all from the school?
Excuse me?
I know that we've been voting at.
I don't think you're ever going to go back to the schools, to be honest.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think the schools.
That's fine, Crawford Mansion is excellent.
The schools with security, they prefer not doing it there. It works, you know. And the schools always have to balance that, you know, the security issues with the school and everything.
Good point, okay.
Although they do their elections in the gym.
Yeah, that's a good point there. October 22nd or something.
Yeah, October 22nd. Any other questions or comments?
No, I'm just going to add something on the board, just as a friendly reminder to the public, because we do get this question from time to time. Is that regarding voter registration, that is something you need to go to the County Board of Elections for? If you need help finding your polling place, that's something that we can assist. But any questions regarding registration or advocacy ballots must be directed to the County Board of Elections in White Plains.
Thank you.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number six, considering approval of the minutes for the meeting held on April 9th, 2024.
Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees approves the minutes for the meeting held on April 9th, 2024.
Any, any, oh, sorry. Can I have a motion second, please?
So moved.
Any questions or comments?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Administrator's report.
Okay, let's have several items to just want to touch on. This week starts the beginning of our fall leaf collection at Curbside. That started yesterday, and it continues through mid-December as per code. But we always keep a truck on to the end of the year for any, any ones, but basically, by mid-December, we're pretty much done. Fall leaf collection, we keep the information on the website as well as a reminder. You can look up, you know, what days they were collected on your street. You can look to see an estimated return date, which is an estimated date, but you can see how much leaves we've collected throughout each season. It's a little early to be looking at that now, because right now, they're kind of spinning through the village, but there are definitely piles that I saw last week that are already out there. Village offices will be closed next Monday, October 14th, for Columbus Day. And also, that's a reminder that the sanitation schedule also gets modified. So Monday's garbage goes to Tuesday, Tuesday's garbage goes to Wednesday. No green waste, and everything else stays the same. Again, we have the new app that people do seem to like, so, you know, if you have any, was it Recycle? Recycle Coach app is very helpful, and it'll give you reminders and tell you the new schedules as the holidays come out. Also, it's a nice way to ask questions about what's recyclable and what's not recyclable and other things like that, common questions. Early voting, people are wondering when that starts, so that starts, early voting for the November 5th general election. That starts on October 26th, and it goes through November 3rd. The County Department of Elect, the Board of Elections website has all the timeframes and the days that they'll be open for early voting and when they'll be staffed. Our Rybrook Firehouse is one of the locations in Westchester County where you can go for early voting. And just a reminder, you can go to, as long as you're a Westchester County resident, you can go to any early voting site. It doesn't have to be your home district. So, you know, even if you're from another community, or you're working in one community instead of another, and there's an early voting location, if you choose, there's an option to go and vote early for the November 5th general election. In terms of activities coming up and community events, we have our pumpkin patch on October 19th. That's a Saturday from 9 to 12. We have our annual Halloween on October 26th. That's always a lot of fun. We're from 10:30 to 12, so bring your animals and costume, and we'll have the Humane Society there as well for adopt, with adoptable dogs. And it's always a lot of fun, that event. And then lastly, we have a, our trunk, trunk and treat event, which is going to be a different time. It's going to be during the week, because there's other events on weekends with between the schools and the holidays and everything else. We want to try something a little bit different, which is going to be on October 30th. So remember, that used to be mischief night. So we're going to have the trunk or treat on, from 6 to 7 PM on the Wednesday before Halloween. Huh? The night before. And that's it.
All right, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, the next. Seeing none, the next meetings of the Board of Trustees will be October twenty-second, and, let me just double check, I know that's twenty-second, yeah, and November twelfth of two thousand twenty-four. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those were the ones we got to the meeting.